On this edition of Inside the Clubhouse, you'll hear from the decision makers of the San Francisco Giants in a rare town hall meeting setting in the actual Giants clubhouse at AT&amp;T Park.
Our job is to, it's not just to win ballgames, but to develop players.
Every game, every inning is an inning we can win, it's a game we can win. That attitude's gotta be there.
And quite frankly, it takes a lot of games, as Boach would tell you, usually to catch in the minor leagues to get to the big leagues. But this kid, because of his athletic ability, maybe even more so his bat, is gonna get here in a hurry.
Plus, you'll hear from a Giants pitcher whose offseason workout program rivals those of any top athlete.
It's a 90-day program and it incorporates yoga, kempo, karate, plyometrics.
All this and more, right here on Inside the Clubhouse. Welcome to Inside the Clubhouse. From AT&amp;T Park, here's Scott Reese.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to Inside the Clubhouse, a comprehensive look at the San Francisco Giants. I'm Scott Reese. Now, this show, really, a first of its kind for the Giants, sort of a town hall meeting format. The audience, actual season ticket holders. And everything you see was shot right here in the clubhouse at AT&amp;T Park. Radio voice of the Giants, John Miller, is your host, with special guests, manager Bruce Bochy, general manager Brian Sabian, managing general partner Bill Newcomb, and pitcher Barry Zito. Now, as you all know, the Giants made quite a splash this offseason with various signings, most notably, free agent pitcher and future Hall of Famer Randy Johnson. However, this show is more about what we have themed "The Giants Way." See for yourself, as we head across the room to John Miller.
We have a lot of things that I know that these gentlemen want to tell you about and the Giants' plans. I know you have questions for them. But we also want to give you a special look at a special event that occurred here at AT&amp;T Park, right after the World Series. The Giants, who've got a farm system now that's been building itself up, and a lot of great young talent in that farm system now, and most of the Giants' top young prospects were invited to AT&amp;T Park for what was called a conditioning camp. Here's a behind-the-scenes look at the camp that was held here for a couple of days. Take a look.
Earlier this offseason, the Giants' training staff brought in some of their top prospects to San Francisco to teach them "The Giants Way."
Basically, what we have is the entire minor league system. Obviously, we can't bring every one of them in, and there's 160 of them. So what we do is we evaluate, medical staff and management gives us their opinions on who they want. Now, mostly, we're looking at guys in the top, say, 15 rounds, and then we're looking at that. So it narrows us down to maybe, this year it was 21, 20 players. Day one, which was Sunday for us, we have seven tests that we put them through. And that's like agility, speed, endurance, and we find out, we get a baseline to where these guys actually are.
He flies. I look and see he's flying. Watch him. Attaboy! Check out his arm swing. Though he doesn't pick his knees up very much, Dave, he's a little bit like, he's a little bit like Roger. Oh! He's a scooter. He's a scooter, which is probably, maybe that's what they teach him down there, Dave. That's not believable, but he does the arm swing, but he's a scooter.
Then Monday comes, we have our welcome aboard type thing, and come inside, take them to the training room, and teach them our program, which is a rotator cuff, scap, forearm, upper body, lower body. And we put that on the board, they work, they do that. It's also in their manual, but to have them here do it with us, they can understand and appreciate it more. From that part, we have lunch, and then we go right to our afternoon session, which is really cool, because then, first day was Bill Newcomb. So Bill came in and spoke to the guys about, hey, this is what we're gonna do, and this is what the Giants are trying to do. You're here for a reason.
I hope you'll have the confidence of knowing that we wouldn't trade the group we have in this room for any group of prospects in baseball today. It seemed to me, as I was thinking about how we could do better in a new administration, that we should all understand what "The Giants Way" is. It's a plan. It's an approach. If you don't have a framework, if you don't have some objectives, if you don't have a way to get there, you're much less likely to get where you want to get.
Remember, guys, you're gonna do this in spring training, so when you're home, whether you're working out with somebody or doing it yourself, good warm-up, okay? It'll just get you more and more and more in tune to what you need to be doing.
The goal of the camp, to have players develop their training routine as they learn the expectations from the Giants, presented by general manager Brian Sabian and manager Bruce Bochy.
I think you have to be open-minded and understand what work ethic means. Work ethic means that on any given day, corresponding to you being ready as a professional, or coming in, and just no other way to put it, punching the clock, you gotta be prepared to go to work. You've gotta do something every day so that you leave the field with doing something positive. You can't get shut out.
You should be honest. We're all in this thing together. We're all out there to win. And we're here to help you. Your coaches are here to help you, I'm here to help you. I don't care what level you're at, minor league, major league, the door's always open. I tell my players that. Most of them do. Some of them are comfortable, but most of them do come in occasionally, say, hey, you know, I've got this, I've got that. The only way I can identify a problem is know what's going on. And I'm here to help you.
Of course, the camp was dominated by training, mixed in with some classroom time. These players were also privileged to see firsthand the storied history of the Giants franchise.
Willie actually brought in, I think, three, four jerseys of his own, a jacket, and he actually asked guys questions. And if they got the question right, he signed it and then gave it to them. I mean, that doesn't happen every day. And then Willie sat down with three dozen balls signed. Everybody here got a ball. And then kids were actually able to talk to Willie.
Who did you, what are you? Me? Yeah. I thought you had a good handshake. That's why I was asking.
With all of this newly-acquired Giants knowledge, these prospects were headed to their minor league cities now, hoping one day to return to San Francisco for good.
When you leave us, we're not here to say, hey, you've gotta be here now, we're picking you up, you're gonna eat, and you're gonna go. Now it's your turn. And that's what we tried to instill in them, being a guy who's ready to come out and do it every day. And that comes from a person, it comes from within.
Quick feet, guys, again, remember. Each time, each time, each time. There you go. Turn and burn. Turn, turn, turn.
So that was the way it was back in early November, and the Giants' new managing general partner, Bill Newcomb. Great idea, the Giants are a tradition-rich organization. This will be the 127th season of Giants baseball. But this idea of "The Giants Way," can you explain that to us a little bit?
Sure. "The Giants Way" is a description of how it is we're gonna play winning baseball. And it starts with a talent. So it's having the people in our organization who can identify, all around the world, at all levels of baseball, the best baseball athletes. Athletes who have a chance to develop their skills to the point of being contributors at the major league level, at the very top level. So we've gotta find people who are five-skill players, who are extraordinary pitchers, players who have the makeup to play a long season, people who want to win, want to compete and win more than anything else, people who want to do it as part of a team, who'll pick up their teammate, who will shed the credit to a teammate for a good play or a good win. Players who want to win innings and win ballgames more than anything else they do. So it's all about finding the skills and then putting them with the Bruce Boches and the coaches and the trainers. You saw Ben, our strength coach. This guy's an inspiration. How could you not want to work out with a guy like that, showing you how to get to be a more fit player? So it's putting this talent, the best talent we can find, we gotta do a better job than 29 other competitors at finding that talent. Putting them with the best managers, the best coaches, the best trainers, so that at the end of the day, they know how to play winning baseball as a team. Giants at every level, from our team in Salem, Oregon, all the way through our ranks up to Fresno, and finally here, every Giant's gotta have an approach on every single pitch. He's gonna be better conditioned, he's gonna be better trained in the fundamentals, he's gonna be better informed about the game and about his opponents, and he's gonna be more focused on his opposition. And every game, every inning is an inning we can win, it's a game we can win. That attitude's gotta be there. And the point is, by the time that talent has been with those people, come up and play with Bruce, they're ready to play major league baseball as a team and to win games.
Now, Bochy, ever played in an organization or managed an organization that had, you know, the way to play that was all the way through the organization? Because I know there are organizations that have done that and have instilled that this is the way we play the game in this organization.
I've never, never seen what we did this year, as far as bringing the players in here, have them go through a workout, and you have your managing partner address them, the general manager, myself, and let them know what you're thinking, and make them feel like they have ownership and everything, too. I think these kids just got a thrill out of listening to Willie Mays and feeling the tradition and understand, you know, what giant baseball is. These kids now, they go on spring training, they have a better idea of what we're looking for, what we expect out of them, and what they can expect out of us. And we're all in this together, as I had mentioned there, and these kids, I think, feel like it, that they are, they're part of something that is special here. That's the way you want them to feel, that they have a big say in our success.
All right, now, the Giants, we know Lincecum, Kane, the rotation, you've added to the bullpen. What other plans are there for the Giants in this offseason that you can tell us about, Brian?
I think the biggest thing that we're trying to do is to stay fluid, and part of which we're experiencing is maybe more frustration than we've seen in past years. To trade players, or more so, get ourselves in a position, as we all know, to add somebody to our lineup, specifically a big bat. I can just tell you from experience, there's a climate in baseball right now that unfortunately, while contracts can encumber you in making a trade, a lot of times, the person that you're engaged with, being the other general manager of an organization, to get a deal done, has to go into the relative negotiation, having to either win the deal or want to win the deal. And as we all know, I said to the partners today in our meeting, you know, whether it's in life, business, or in sports, if you take that stance, it's gonna be very difficult to get something done. What we've experienced is two things. One, to get any kind of bat that would be an upgrade to our current situation, that we could have for present or future consideration on the team, we're gonna have to give up pitching. With how our teams constructed, we're more interested, or we're more likely to want to go after a infield option and pursue that type of player versus an outfield option.
General manager Brian Sabian is next on Inside the Clubhouse.
This guy's a professional hitter. He's gonna remind you a lot of Richie Arroyo in his prime without the power, and he's gonna play short like Richie when Richie was an everyday shortstop.
And later...
Like chair, basically, you just like come up, and then you go like this, and then you just come down, and you hold this for like a minute, or a minute, a couple minutes.
What are we gonna expect for the corner infield spots? And Sandoval looked pretty good as a hitter, but it was, you know, a short period that he actually got to address that. And Ishikawa didn't seem like he was too consistent in his hitting, but what can we expect in those corner spots?
Sandoval came up as a third baseman. In fact, it was us that converted him to a catcher, because we thought his body type or more so his style of play would be more suited as a catcher. Since he's been able to do that, he's also played first base. Having said that, in the small snapshot of what we saw last year, and I'm speaking for Bochy and the staff, he did nothing wrong at third base to make us think that he won't be, quote, "league average" at that position. In a perfect world, we'd elect somebody more experienced and maybe have him at first base, probably. But to get to Ishikawa, what's gonna be interesting is that Ishikawa, right now, with what he's done in his breakout year in the minor leagues to get to the big leagues, we really think that if he can give us a steady average, and he may need some help against left-handed pitching, and hit for some power in our ballpark, which, as we know, is always a challenge, he, right now, is probably one of the better defensive first basemen you could see in the minor leagues, let alone on our ball club. And as we all know, experiencing what we had to do to experiment a little bit, including with Balker, it's a very difficult position to play. Our pitching needs all the defense it can get, if we're gonna accent or capitalize on our pitching. But, you know, this kid, I think, right now is in the right frame of mind, his career's turned in the right direction. It will be a challenge to see what we do on a daily basis, especially against that left-handed pitcher. But I think Bochy's somewhat addressed that with the fact that we're gonna have Franz and take ground balls at first base and third base. And, you know, who knows? We've discussed it, including publicly, bringing somebody like Richie Arroyo back, did a nice job for us in that role, especially the second half. So for instance, the day that you could have Richie play third, Sandoval could play first.
Edgar Renteria had a, for him, a down year in Detroit, but hit .322 the year before with Atlanta. And the last time he had a down year was another year that he went to the American League with Boston. And when I read that you had signed Renteria, that's the first thing I thought was, well, this guy has been a National League guy, he's had great success in the National League, and for whatever reason, has struggled those two years he went to the American League. Is there something to that? Is that a myth, or is he really a National League guy?
If you really just take his first half last year, which was miserable in a lot of ways, and the expectations of that Detroit club, that's really the only blip on the screen in terms of his relative consistency. Where we got lucky is that we were able to get, if not a scout in the ballpark, almost every game between the All-Star break and the end of the year, whether it was Renteria or anybody that was gonna become a free agent, we had video. And then on top of that, we had the statistical analysis that Bill spoke about. This guy, we think, being how we modeled his second half, and what we saw of him being in better shape, his numbers being more career average in that sample size, and then also how he played shortstop, we were convinced that this guy, for what our needs are, which is somebody to come in for a couple of years to bridge the gap between what's gonna happen with Burris being the everyday shortstop, or even somebody like Noonan. Quite frankly, we also had the experience of what we saw in the Fall League, where Burris, as he played every day, actually was a little bit more uncomfortable than we thought he might be. Went through a series of games where he was hampered by a knee situation, we backed him off. And then, as we stepped back going into the organizational meetings, we pretty much decided or came to our senses, you know, is it fair to ask this kid, who virtually was brought out of A-ball and got to the big leagues with us, to not only be our shortstop, but to lead off? And the answer to the question was no. I guess the best thing I can say about Renteria for frame of reference, this guy's a professional hitter. He's gonna remind you a lot of Richie Arroyo in his prime without the power, and he's gonna play short like Richie when Richie was an everyday shortstop, where he's gonna feel what he gets to, he's got average range, but this guy's got a lot of hardware. I mean, you know, five-time All-Stars, I think, three-time, or two or three-time Gold Glove, three-time Silver Slugger, and a year removed, or really a half a season removed for hitting .332 in the National League.
Next on Inside the Clubhouse...
The one thing we wanted to do this year, as a year one, is continue to improve. And when you have a lot of young players, our job is to, is not just to win ballgames, but to develop players.
And then, stay tuned as Barry Zito talks offseason workouts.
I mean, you do like real yoga, you do the tree pose?
All that. Yeah, I've been doing that about 10 years.
Welcome back to the show. I'm Scott Reese. Bill Newcomb replaced the retired Peter McGowan as managing general partner back in early October. And since that time, Newcomb has been involved in every aspect of team management, implementing "The Giants Way," which of course begins in the minor league system. Let's go back inside the clubhouse for more questions from the fans.
And my question is, going back, all the years I've been going to the Giants since '58, one of the things that I really enjoyed as a kid going is the scene in field practice. Why have the baseball teams in general gone away from having baseball in-field practice, and also from playing pepper and those kind of things?
The one thing we wanted to do this year, as a year one, is continue to improve. And when you have a lot of young players, our job is to, is not just to win ballgames, but to develop players. And when you have this many young players, we just felt like it was very important for us to take infield. More so than infielders, outfielders need to take infield, outfield, because they don't make a lot of throws. They take their fly balls, but to work on making a quality throw, it takes practice. And they were not getting this practice during our batting practice, so... But we will continue this. I was pleased with how it went. I was pleased with the enthusiasm that the players showed in doing this. They have fun doing it.
Do you call them? Bochy said, here's what I need. Can you get this guy or get that guy? We need a guy for this spot in the order, that spot in the order. What's the dynamic between you and the general manager?
Well, we discuss the club, really, on a daily basis. I mean, we're always talking about our needs and how we can improve. And, you know, Brian is down in the clubhouse a lot, well, really, every day during the season, or we talk on the phone if he's not. So it's constantly being discussed on our needs. And, you know, he listens, and, you know, he listens to the coaching staff. And, you know, we try to be as honest as we can be and be direct, and he'll do whatever he can to help us. And you saw the moves that we made with guys coming out. We needed help, and we got it. And, you know, we needed bullpen help coming into this season, and we've gotten it. So these things are always discussed, John.
Did they get a steal on Athel, as far as you're concerned?
Well, yeah, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, he's durable, this guy throws hard, he throws up to .95, he's got a great breaking ball. Now, I'm taking the stats out right now, I'm talking about from what I see.
So you don't care what they pay him, right?
No, I know.
Get the guy in here, and then you say you can bring him in when you need him, right? Whatever they're paying him.
He's made over 70 appearances, this guy. He's, he's a, he's gonna really help this pen. And that gives us three lefties in the pen, and I don't know what's gonna happen there, but, I mean, to have a guy like this, who is a power left-hander, especially in this division, with, you know, the good left-handed hitters we have that we face, it's good to have a guy like Athel. So no, I don't get caught up in how much we have to pay him.
Bruce Bochy is next on Inside the Clubhouse.
He's a very exciting player, and he's intriguing. That's why this position at second base is, it's gonna be a tight competition.
And later, Barry Zito reveals just who has impacted him greatly this offseason.
He can do a backflip. I don't know if you guys knew that, but he can do a backflip. Like, he'll just be like, oh, wanna see a backflip? Yeah, here, here you go.
Welcome back inside the clubhouse here at AT&amp;T Park. Again, this is a town hall meeting format with the San Francisco Giants and Giants' season ticket holders. Youth reigns supreme on this year's roster, and make no mistake, come spring training next month in Scottsdale, there will be plenty of great position battles, as you see here when we continue the discussion.
Mr. Bochy, I was wondering if you could tell me about Kevin Franson's progress with his Achilles heel injury, and is he being looked at as our second baseman?
As we go into spring training, that's the one position that's gonna be very competitive. We have Kevin Franson, who really played very well at the tail end of the Arizona Fall League. He's doing well with Achilles early. You know, it was a little stiff on him, he wasn't moving quite as well, but as he kept playing, he really started feeling better with his Achilles and started moving around better. He played a lot of games at shortstop. I think he played 16 games there at short, so that shows you that it does feel good. And his hitting was outstanding in the Fall League, so he'll be competing there at second base along with Velez and Burrs. It's gonna be a tight competition, and probably will not get settled until deep in the spring. But Franson will also be taking some ground balls at first base and third base, just to keep him available and keep our flexibility. But did a great job, and I really compliment him on how he really came around and played great baseball there in the Fall League.
Who's the number one, though, going in?
I'll have a number one, John.
So, I mean, how will you determine that in spring training? Who hits the best, who fields the best?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the evaluation process. I mean, Kevin Franson, he probably has the most balanced bat. You look at Velez, he gives you speed, he's a switch hitter, and then you get Burrs. I mean, you look at Burrs and the job he did, and could be the best defender out of the three. So they all bring something a little bit different, and I think as we look at the ball club before we break camp, we'll see where the best fit is. But again, Kevin, who, if you had asked me this at the end of season, I wouldn't have put him in with those other two as far as winning their job at second base, but the way he played, he's earned this.
Now, Velez Eugenio, he's such a raw talent, but he has so much ability, it seems like he's still in a very early stage trying to learn how to play the game, learn how to steal bases, and all that kind of stuff. What's the program for him in the offseason? Is there a way to accelerate the learning process for him? What's the feeling about him in that regard?
Well, I'll say this about Gino. I felt that he was probably one of our most improved players as a year went, especially defensively, early in the season. He lost some confidence, we ended up having to send him to Fresno. And that affected his defense, but this kid is, he's a tireless worker, and he took his hundreds of ground balls there every day, and the improvement showed there, I thought, the last six weeks of the season. It worked. To me, the way he's playing second now will work in the major leagues. And he's playing winter ball, and this kid wants to play every day. I mean, he plays all year, and that's how you get better. So I think Gino did what we were hoping to do, and that's show improvement. I thought he showed improvement with his instincts and running the bases, and also became a more disciplined hitter. So he's a very exciting player, and he's intriguing. That's why this position at second base is, it's gonna be a tight competition.
And of course, Buster Posey, number one draft choice for the Giants, where's he now? Could he be here sooner rather than later?
Posey signed late and was able to come to our instruction league. Kinda had a quirky situation where we sent him off to the Hawaiian Winter League, which kinda irks me, because I've never seen the league, and he was a late sign and got the chance to play in it. I'm kidding. But he got out there, and as it turned out miraculously, he was only allowed to catch once every three days. Now, it might have had something to do with the manager being a Dodger. The employee. So what we did to circumvent that, very diplomatically, is we said, well, guess what? You're gonna come back to the instruction league and play every day here until you're done, and then you can go back out there to Waikiki and catch every three days. And he ended up having a great season. You can look at him online, including, I think Bobby Evans told me today, that he hit a homerun in the championship game to win the league. So he's a guy that I think, and Bochy certainly is more of an expert, the more you see of him, he was a converted shortstop. This kid really has a feel for catching. His only minus right now is that he's never called his own game, because in college, the coaches call the game. So he's gotta get acclimated to what it means to put the side down, control the running game, understand the nuances. And quite frankly, it takes a lot of games, as Bochy would tell you, usually to catch in the minor leagues to get to the big leagues. But this kid, because of his athletic ability, maybe even more so his bat, is gonna get here in a hurry.
Giants managing general partner, Bill Newcomb, next on Inside the Clubhouse.
The whole point is, get these opinions, get the videotape, get the statistics crunched in a way that's useful. Get the eyes of the baseball guys on this talent, and out of that comes, I think, a very sound opinion about whether they're our kind of player and what they can do to help us.
And later...
So breakfast would be like an egg white omelet with asparagus in it, maybe some fake cheese, a bag of pineapple slices, and two pieces of, like, sprouted grain toast.
Obviously, there's a lot of interest in the minor leagues from all these questions that you've been...
that you've been receiving. I'm wondering, Mr. Newcomb, there are a lot of leagues or a lot of clubs out there that will let their minor league teams play a game in the major league stadium. I'm wondering if the Giants are going to consider that for their teams in San Jose or Fresno?
We are very committed to increasing our presence in Santa Clara County. And we like the Giants because they have our name. We like the kind of talent they've brought through that organization and worked its way up to us. Sandoval's maybe the best example.
Bill, I wanted to pursue this thing about the statistics. Now, the Red Sox have Bill James. Bill James seems like he invented the statistical wave that sort of overtook baseball the last several years. So, what is your idea? What are the Giants incorporating in terms of the statistical analysis?
Well, Bill James is one source of information for us, but just one. And these guys probably blend five or six sources of information about these players. And they have some of their own formulas that create statistics that they think are helpful to us in judging how these players might contribute as part of our 25-man roster. So, the reality of the world is that there's an enormous amount of statistics out there about baseball, and they're accessible to everybody. You don't have to buy books, it's on the internet to a large extent. And I think that Brian's guys, Jeremy Shelley and Heshup Gofarb, are two of the brightest analysts you could hope to have. Jeremy's been with us for 15 years. There's always talk about the crunching that goes on across the bay. We've been crunching here ever since Jeremy came with us. And the best part of it is that they're baseball guys. They're not just numbers geeks. We heard him for three days, say to Bruce and say to Brian, this guy's not worth it. This guy's not going to be a holder, because look at what he does in the eighth inning compared to the seventh inning. This is a guy we want, they'd say. So, on the basis of all the information they have and share with these other baseball guys, the scouts, and the conditioners, and Brian, and Tidrow, and those guys, they have opinions that come in and get in the mix. And Brian would look over at Bruce and say, how does this guy fit in your 25-man roster? What can he do for you? What do you think about him, Bruce? Will he work for you? And then you have the scouts saying, this guy didn't hit the second half, and here's why he didn't hit the second. I think he had an injury. I think this guy's lost a step. The whole point is, get these opinions, get the videotape, get the statistics crunched in a way that's useful. Get the eyes of the baseball guys on this talent, and out of that comes, I think, a very sound opinion about whether they're our kind of player and what they can do to help us. It was eye-opening, John, to be spent three days down in our minor league complex, learning about how they go about finding talent, and how they analyze that talent, and how they compare that talent with what else is available, and find ways to get the next best person to take us to be a better ball club was, it was really gratifying. I wish each one of you could have been in one of those meetings, because you would have been, I think, amazed by the way you blend scouts who see things that none of us, well, you see it, but most baseball fans can't see things the scouts can see in a baseball player. So, they're contributing. And you've got these analysts who have all kinds of information at their fingertips, and they're cutting it eight different ways and telling you, how many strikeouts does this guy get in the sixth inning, and how many walks does he give? Do the walks build up in the seventh? Does he take the pressure in the eighth? And they're doing these very serious analysis of this guy's performance, and they tell Brian and Bobby, this is what you can expect of this talent. This is the kind of player he can be for us. And just three days of that was a remarkable learning experience for us. And I don't think anybody in baseball does a better job than Brian and his team, and Bruce, Bobby, and those guys, Dick Tidrow, understanding all the talent that's out there at every level in professional baseball, and finding the guys who can make a difference for us. We think we've got a bullpen now that is substantially strengthened, and it's going to mean a lot more six- and seven-inning games for us, where we win.
What's, like, Tim Linscom, which one's he on?
He's on Genetic Freak Program.
Giants pitcher Barry Zito, next on Inside the Clubhouse.
Please welcome number 75, left-hander Barry Zito.
Now, first off, the last I saw Brian Wilson at the end of the season, he was telling me that you were inviting him to your home, and that he was going to get involved in some real heavy-duty workouts with you in the offseason. So, is he there yet? Has that started yet? What's going on with that?
Yeah, we're in full board right now. We've been, well, you know, I've had a house in Elliott for six years, and I lived with my sister for a number of years. And so, Wilson, we just, you know, it's funny, because I look back two years ago when I was in spring training, the first guy I played catch with, and I had 60 guys to choose from, was Wilson. And two years later, we're living together. And I'm not a roommate guy at all, but for some reason, he just inspires me to want to be better at everything. And, you know, he's got that closer dominant kind of fire, and so we just do, you know, I'm doing his workout program. He's motivating me to stay on workouts and nutrition every day, and I'm showing him around my town in return.
I mean, what's an average day?
Yeah.
On the Wilson workout?
It's a program called P90X, actually. It's on late-night television. It's a 90-day program, and it incorporates yoga, tempo karate, plyometrics. And then, for instance, today, like, woke up, did this thing CardioX for 45 minutes, just like a real good cardio program, and then did back and buys, and then you do this 15-minute ab program straight, three days a week, and it's just tons of stuff. It's a lot of fun, though.
I mean, you do, like, real yoga? Do you do?
Oh, yeah.
The tree pose?
All that.
Yeah?
Yeah, I've been doing that about 10 years, and then going into this, it's just really advanced.
What's your favorite yoga pose?
Probably pigeon, because it's a good hip stretch.
Yeah?
A lot of pitchers, we get tight hips for everything, you know? So, pigeon, you know, you kind of have your leg up, but you're on the ground, and you're just stretching out your whole hip capsule.
Yeah. So, is there a simpler one? Maybe you could give us an idea right here? One where you don't have to get all sprawled out on the floor and all...
I'd probably have to get sprawled.
For the pigeon? Is there another one, like a simpler one?
Show me reverse warrior.
Reverse warrior? Yeah, I don't care. I mean, I'll say whatever, I don't care.
But I want it to be a simple one. I don't want to be a...
Like the standard, like...
I don't want to impose some...
Like chair, basically, you just, like, come up, and then you go like this, and then you just come down, and you hold this for like a minute, or a minute and a couple minutes. You just basically hold that right there.
So, you ever get calls from guys around the league, say, hey, what about the Giant? What can you tell me?
Yeah, a couple of my old buddies with the A's, you know, I know Street wanted to, Street was looking to, well, he was getting traded, because he wasn't a free agent, but, you know, he really wanted to stay in the Bay Area and be on the team and stuff like that. But, you know, like I said, I mean, I would think saves that a lot of those talks are already going on, you know, before the player ever calls. I mean, he probably knew that Street was going to get traded months before Street even thought. So, you know, a lot of times, these guys know what's going on.
Maybe you could just call Brian sometimes, say, hey, what about this guy? Try to get this guy. What do you think? He wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I don't, if I feel strongly, yeah, definitely. You know, with Street, I mean, I love Street, but we got Wilson, so, you know, and Wilson's my roommate, too, so that wouldn't have worked out.
All right. Is there something about Wilson that you didn't realize now that you see him a lot in the offseason? That you now know? There's something about him that surprised you?
I was wondering that, because, you know, he's kind of, he's not the most open guy when he first meets people, but when he gets comfortable, he gets real talkative, and he's great. And no, I mean, I pretty much, you know, he's exactly how I thought. And he's just a very honest person. I mean, what you see is what you get with him, so...
And he, it's not just the working out. As you said, it's the nutrition. I mean, he's got a very strict diet and the kind of foods he eats and that sort of thing?
Yeah, the program comes with a nutrition program. And it's kind of funny, because, you know, Wilson will, you know, he's not in a position where he wants to pay for the nutritionist like I do. So, he has to make every meal, which is hilarious.
So, he makes his own meals?
Yeah, like, I get these trays delivered to my house every night, five trays. And I put them in the fridge, and the next day, I just, like, heat them up, you know, microwave or stove or whatever, and then eat them. So, my food is hot, and I'm already eating, and he's still getting his ingredients out. And five times a day. And he just has this look, and he's just so mad that he has to cook. And, you know, I'm done before he even turns the stove on, and I'm downstairs, like, playing video games again. And he's, like, cooking for, I mean, he gets so mad, and he's like, oh, your food looks pretty good today, jeez.
So, give me an idea, breakfast. What's for breakfast?
It's 700 calories, it's 80 carbs, 60 protein, and 15 fat. It's like the same ratio, and then you get that five times a day. So, breakfast would be like an egg white omelet with asparagus in it, maybe some fake cheese, a bag of pineapple slices, and two pieces of, like, sprouted grain toast.
Bochy, how do you feel about that?
That's a snag for me.
Yeah, but after you have this, then what's for breakfast?
Yeah, seriously. Cheat days are on Sunday nights, so we always go out Sunday night, and we have a good meal in LA.
Oh, all right. So, when you're having this stuff in the morning, though, the egg whites and the asparagus, all that kind of stuff, which, I mean, actually sounds pretty good, but...
Yeah, it's pretty good.
There's not a day where you say, man, I'd really like a Belgian waffle, or some big stack of pancakes, or some, I'd love some pure pork sausage from Farmer John.
I'll tell you what. Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We save that up for Sunday night. And Wilson said that he looks forward, he said Monday morning, he's looking forward to Sunday night again. So, because we just, we'll go, like, chicken parm, and just whatever we can get our hands on that night.
Sunday night.
Yeah.
Sunday night.
Yeah, Sunday night, yeah.
Well, it's not long until Sunday night, actually.
I know, trust me, I'm counting the days. Seriously.
So, how did the thing with Wilson come about? Did you go to him, he came to you? How did this thing develop?
Yeah, basically, you know, I just sensed that he would be a great guy to be around every day. I mean, his locker is right next to mine, so we're right here in this corner, and I got to know him for two years, you know, being around him. And I just thought it'd be, it's always good to have someone in your life, I think, that elevates your game and brings you up to a higher level, whether it's in your workouts, your nutrition, or just your everyday mindset. And so, we feed off each other. We have a really cool relationship where we keep trying to push each other to be better.
And what's, like, Tim Linscom, which one's he on?
He's on Genetic Freak Program. He can do a backflip. I don't know if you guys knew that, but he can do a backflip. Like, he'll just be like, oh, want to see a backflip? Yeah, here, here you go.
He stands there, and then he does a backflip and ends up standing up again?
Yeah, I think he was a gymnast, wasn't he, a gymnast, like, as a kid?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think he was a, I mean, he just has this, his fibers and his muscles are insane. I think he does push-ups and pull-ups, and that's about it.
We know you wanted to be here tonight to speak to the people, and that you have another function to attend, and I think I've already held you over longer than we were supposed to, so our apologies to the next group you're going to be with, but ladies and gentlemen,
Thanks very much for joining us inside the clubhouse for this unique look at the San Francisco Giants. We certainly hope you've enjoyed the show. Don't forget, stay tuned to Comcast SportsNet Bay Area for plenty of great exclusive Giants programming throughout the 2009 baseball season, which is rapidly approaching. For John Miller, Bill Newcomb, Brian Sabian, Bruce Bochy, and Barry Zito, I'm Scott Reese. We'll see you around the ballpark.